Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call this an informational meeting of Tuesday, February 15th, 2022, to order. I do know we have several counselors on the phone that have already traveled to Pierre for Sioux Falls Day tomorrow. We're going to jump right into council remarks. If you have any council remarks, now would be the time to bring them up. Seeing none, I'll just give you a quick update on our Olympic curling team. They're both still in contention for a medal. The men will have to win tonight, and the women also for them to get to the medal round, which is, I know, very, very exciting for all of us. So our only presentation we have today is a very important one, the Employer of Choice Plan, Bill O'Toole.
Good afternoon, Council. Bill O'Toole from Human Resources. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you and talk about what we have identified as the Employer of Choice Plan. I'll kind of give a brief background of what led us to it. We'll pull up the plan in a little bit for everybody to see, review the initiatives, and kind of the buckets tied to it, and answer any questions that you have. And we've got Director Prichet here as well to address any questions with respect to the supplemental appropriations budget tonight as well. I don't think it's any secret to the council or anybody in the city that we're experiencing very low unemployment and inflation, and that's created some workforce challenges in Sioux Falls. We know that in order to stay ahead of these changes, we need to invest in our most valuable resource, and that's our city employees. And to demonstrate our commitment and remain competitive in this marketplace, we're introducing this Employer of Choice Plan, and it targets specific areas such as recruitment, retention, and employee well-being. We came to this plan through collaboration and worked very closely with the finance team, as well as getting feedback from some of our employees and focus groups. And like many employers across this city, we're all facing these same challenges, and we're competing for the opportunity to attract and retain valuable employees. We've been working on this plan probably since November. Obviously, it takes some time to put this information together. It just doesn't come together last minute, and we present it. So we've been working on this for some time, and I'd like to identify kind of some of those unique metrics, if you will, that led us to develop this plan, and really talk about what is the challenging labor environment that we're in. Yeah, as of November of last year, the unemployment rate was 1.8% here in Sioux Falls, and inflation was running 6.8%. When I refer to inflation, I'm referring to the Consumer Price Index for all urban areas. So, low unemployment, high inflation, and we were watching that information closely. And obviously, that led to the discussions to identify that we needed to do something. And as we're doing that, the December CPIU showed an inflation rate of 7%. And then as of January, they just released the latest report, and it was at 7.5%. So we're seeing rates we haven't seen in a very, very long time. And I'll also bring to your attention that we negotiated contracts pre-pandemic, so the COLA for city employees ranged from 2% to 2.5%. And we were also experiencing our own kind of symptoms, if you will. Our employment information, we had in 2021 a turnover rate of 9.8%. The year before, it was 6.8%. And our average over about 11-year period was 7.18%. And the other thing that was interesting, our employment team was communicating with us regularly, and we were experiencing things we hadn't seen in a long time. For example, August through November, we posted 40 positions, and seven different times had to go out, two or more times just to find a candidate. And one of those, we had to post three different times before we could find the candidate. So all this information's coming together, and obviously, we want to be proactive. We don't want to be reactive, but we knew it was time, that we needed to respond to these conditions, and thus, the Employer of Choice Plan. I'll pull up here. And again, what we have identified is we wanted to come at this from multiple perspectives. And you'll see up in front of you that we have initiatives, three initiatives in each of the areas of retaining employees, well-being, and recruitment. And I'll run through each one of these just real quickly, and we'll have plenty of time to answer questions as well. Under the area of retaining city employees, during quarter two, our proposal is that we provide a one-time retention incentive of $2,000 to each full-time city employee. And also in quarter two, we want to initiate an independent review of the city's wages and benefits to ensure market competitiveness. And one of the items that we've already accomplished through the council's support is we made some significant investments and adjustments to our part-time wages to be more competitive in that area. In the area of our employee well-being, we have already modified our sick leave assistance program to provide greater flexibility for issues of maternity and paternity leave. And by quarter two, we also want to reduce the years of service required to accrue vacation time. We're not putting more vacation time on the table. What we're doing is accelerating how fast you get there. And also in quarter two, our recommendation is that we provide new full-time employees a bank of 40 hours of vacation when they start. Because we are in accrual system, it was identified a while ago that that was a weakness in our benefit structure that we wanted to address. In the area of recruiting and attracting employees to the city, we also were identifying very quickly that our starting wage was not competitive. Everybody's made some changes. We wanted to do the same. And what we recommended and what we've started to initiate is removal of a couple of the scales, our lower-end scales. So we lifted the floor so that our starting wage at the city's Sioux Falls and our full-time employees was at least $17.50 an hour. This next item, we also want to accomplish in quarter two, and that is if we can get a referral from a city employee to get a qualified applicant that we actually hire, that we'd give them an incentive for doing so, of $500. Pretty common practice in the industry. We haven't been doing anything like that. And lastly, this one's already done as well under the umbrella of recruitment, is we wanted to provide a hiring incentive for what we identify as hard-to-fill positions. So if we're trying to attract somebody, we're already utilizing that. You might have heard a little information about that with respect to the Sioux Falls Police Department. That's the only area where we have done that to date, but that's not to say that might not apply to other areas, and that was part of our plan as well. Let me spend a little more time talking specifically about the retention incentive, the $2,000. Obviously, we've identified it as a retention incentive. We think it is going to act that way, but we also believe it is also going to help us serve other important reasons as well, particularly the inflationary gap that I talked about before. If you remember, city employees received anywhere from a 2% to a 2.5% cost of living adjustment, and CPI is running at 7.5%. That is a significant gap. And one of the things that we were aware of when we were looking at various options is we knew that the average annual compensation for an AFSMI member, for example, the $2,000 would represent a 4% bump, if you will, to that group. The average annual compensation for police and fire, the $2,000 represented a 3% bump. And for the Chapter 39 employees, based on their average annual compensation, that $2,000 would represent about a 2% bump. So we believe the methodology or the proposal is putting efforts to those employees that are most affected in this scenario. And I would also draw your attention that this isn't the first time we've utilized lump-sum considerations. It's been a long time, but we're also in times that we haven't seen in a very long time. In 1990, 95, 98, 99, and 2000, we utilized a lump-sum strategy for resolving some labor contracts as well. And again, to provide some just relative comparisons with respect to what we're proposing here, I think all of us have heard different scenarios, but the state of South Dakota, for example, proposed a 6% inflationary adjustment for state employees. The school district was around 8%, and for some different groups, was even higher. And obviously, we're aware of the respective healthcare systems and some significant moves that they have made to respond to this environment. Now, for the meeting tonight, because how we get to some of these initiatives and accomplishing them, they're done in different ways, tonight will be first reading for supplemental budget appropriations that Sean will address to fund the initiatives. And I'll also be here to address the piece that has to do with the well-being side of the equation, and that is modifying Chapter 39 of the personnel regulations to adjust those vacation accrual schedules to coincide with this plan. So again, I think what I'm going to do is I'll stop at that particular point and maybe get to some of your questions. And again, Sean is here. If you'd like to ask any questions about the appropriations, I'm going to use some round numbers here, that the appropriations budget's about 2.4 million to the general fund, about 400K in the enterprise funds. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Counselor Neitz, sir?
Director, obviously, we all want to compensate our employees fairly and have them be happy and healthy. So let's just start with that. I do want to ask about, let's put everything to the side except for the retention incentive. All of the rest, I think, is not really a problem, but of course, it's a big-ticket item, so it's raising some questions, and I'm kind of noodling it in my own mind. So, just so I can understand a few things. First of all, do our labor contracts allow us, just in theory, could you do targeted retention payments, for example, to high performers? Or is that not allowed?
You could, through the negotiation process, try something like that. My response would be that the unions generally like to look at something very even keel that lifts the boats for everybody. And, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so you couldn't just unilaterally mid-year without reopening a contract, just say, hey, this person's a high performer. We don't want to lose you. We're giving you a one. Because, like, in my industry, we have something like that, but we're not unionists.
Sorry, and maybe I wasn't following you. So thank you for the clarification. The answer to that is no. And the other piece that will be coming forward at the appropriate time, and we wanted to time, obviously, our efforts. So not only will we have ordinance proposals, we'll also have a resolution in support of memorandums of understanding that would amend the labor contracts respectively, that would be consistent with what you see up on the screen here. So that would come forward in a resolution format on March 1st, which would be second reading to the budget supplementation, the supplemental appropriations, and second reading for changes to Chapter 39. So it's all timed together collectively, if that makes sense. And maybe that might be a question you were having in that direction as well.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so I guess that answers that question. How long, I forget, how long does a wage study usually take from once you've let the contract?
The wage study, the way we've kind of mapped it out at this point, it's probably going to cover maybe about a year and a quarter. The last time we did the wage study was in 2018. Prior to that, it was 2009. And I think one of the foundational reasons we want to do another one now is because we recognize, we don't know all the ways in which the market has moved. We know it's moved substantially. But before we commit to, I guess, longer-term adjustments or corrections, we want to obtain that data and spend the time necessary analyzing it, studying it, and making sure we move in the right directions, and that it's grounded in prior studies that have been very important to us in the past, and recognizing we might have to speed that up, the frequency with which we do those moving forward.
And maybe you partly answered it, but just in theory, could you, and why would you not potentially just do, like, a limited reopening of contracts and renegotiate a COLA? I mean, that's ongoing. I mean, that's going to ripple throughout the years.
You could. And we have done that in some cases, where we set a three-year contract, for example, commit to three years with wage openers for a subsequent two years. We have done items like that.
Okay, I guess so. And I may talk more about this tonight. So as I'm just kind of thinking about it, and maybe I'll talk more about, you know, where the analog I'm using, which is, you know, in the private sector, we do have, whatever you wish to call it, retention incentives, where we have that sort of thing, but we have, there's criteria, and it's very targeted. And it really has to do with the risk analysis per an employee. Do, you know, if you think they're at high risk that you're going to lose them, versus just an across-the-board. So I guess the question that I'm being asked is, you know, what's the justification? Do we have, you know, do you have a reasoning that we're suddenly losing a lot of employees, and if we don't do this, we're going to have, you know, it's an extraordinary thing to do, so what should, the justification should be pretty good?
Yeah. And my primary response to that at this point in time is, as I kind of opened, that it's serving multiple purposes. Obviously, we hope that it serves as a retention incentive for our employees, but we also know that it's, that we have this gap between the existing base COLA that employees are receiving. So we wanted to be able, we wanted to be able to address that, at least now, as a temporary move. We'll let the compensation benefit study come forward. We'll use that more as our foundational tool to set future direction without overreacting today. And the other part of this plan, and why we wanted to put this together, is while I'm not here telling you that, you know, the sky is falling, we see some indicators that are going on, and we think it would be, it wouldn't, it certainly wouldn't be a good thing for us to wait for that to happen. Let's be proactive and try to avoid some of that from happening as well, based on what we do know that's going on in the economy, that we do know what's going on with the demographics and the data that we're seeing from our employment team. And what we saw was, it was time to do something. Let's not just sit back and let some of this stuff happen. So, yeah, we don't have the strict metrics on that, because it's doing multiple things, if that makes sense.
Counselor Erickson, you have a question?
Yes, thank you very much. My question either for Bill or Sean, talk to me a little bit about why we're using housing funds for housing employees. Full disclosure, I really struggle with that and would like to potentially have an amendment brought forth at second reading, to just have it be all coming from the same place. We know we have a housing shortage. I'm appreciative of those employees in the housing area, but I don't want to use a cent that would be impacted from housing for our community. So I'm just a little bit concerned and wanted to ask that question as far as how would that look, why is the reason, and if you could provide more information, and maybe it doesn't need to be amended.
So the primary reason, the payments are made from the fund or the area or division from which the employee is considered an employee of that area. So, housing division, you have employees of that housing division, but it doesn't necessarily deplete that fund to a significant expense, because those employees are already compensated out of that fund. So it goes back to where is the employee actually receiving their paycheck from, what division, budget division within the city are they paid from, and how that's allocated across the system. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it does. I'm just, I totally get it, and I understand that that's where the money is already within that department, and that it's not appropriated at this time yet. But I just don't want to see any additional impact from it. And then when you compare it to the others, the others are coming from the general fund. They're not coming from within their own department.
I believe, I'll have to check on this. I believe it actually is coming from the general fund. They're just classified as housing employees. They're within the division of housing. But I can, I'll get some clarification on that for this evening.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, it's just based on my, you know, quick research, it appears that the other ones are all from the general fund, and that this one is a little bit different. And so it was just the perception of the money being taken from a housing fund and not general fund for housing employee bonuses. So that's my question with that.
Yeah, I can check into that and get you an answer this evening.
That would be great. And I could, I would think it'd be fairly clean one way or another. And like I said, I'm not committal, but at first blush, I'm like, ooh, I don't like that. The other questions that I had were related to our union contracts. And I think, Bill, you did a, Director, you did a great job at, you know, explaining that. I just didn't know if it had a huge impact on those union contracts, because we know that in the past, they've not always been smooth. And so anytime you risk opening up a union contract, provided we're giving them more, potentially giving them more money in vacation, I'm sure they're not going to say, no, don't open it. However, you know, it's just always one of those kind of squeamish things when we reopen up any of those contracts. So, but I think most of the questions were answered in that way. So, yeah. The other one that is being pulled from another area is storm drainage. That's being pulled from a different area as well. So that one's not a general fund, I don't believe. So there is a little bit of a difference. So I'm just curious through that.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Brecky?
Question along the same line.
That we, yeah, you said that we use a lump sum in 1990, 1995, and 2000 to resolve contract issues. Were those in the regular course of regular contracts, or did we use a re-opener in order to do that?
I wasn't here in 1990. If I were to speculate, I'd say that was part of the process, that as they were looking to close some of those deals, that that was brought to the table.
Do you know of any other time that we have done, that we've actually opened a contract, other than kind of in an emergency situation, when there was either a change of law, or some small thing, some small tweak that we went in, in order to, you know, give a benefit package during the midterm of the contract?
No, the closest example I would use is we followed the same methodology that we did with respect to Juneteenth holiday. If you remember that, about a year or so ago, we did the exact same thing there, where we went to the unions and said, look, this is something we would like to do. We don't necessarily want to open the contract for purposes of rebargaining, but we'd be willing to entertain memorandum of understanding agreement with you to accomplish it. They agreed, and we did it, and we followed that same principle here. And again, we certainly, we don't take that lightly, because normally you don't want to do those things where you're repeatedly going back and touching labor contracts. That's not something you normally want to do. But I would submit that we are in very unique and unconventional times. You know, we're seeing inflation rates we haven't seen in, what, close to 40 years. I mean, this is just, it's kind of a, it's a crazy time, and everybody's moving and trying to adapt and compete and do these things. And we just thought, this is worth the extra effort to try to get some of these things accomplished, so that we can continue to provide those essential services and not be disruptive, and at least have a cohesive plan coming forward to deal with it.
How much time is left on each of the three contracts in the regular?
They expire in 2023. So we'll be in full, we'll be in bargaining in early 2022, or sorry, 2023 for 2024.
And then what were the COLAs that we gave in each of the respective contracts that we just negotiated with the different department, with the different units?
Bear with me, Counselor. I have the information.
I think I know it in my head, but I'm not sure. So I just want a confirmation of that.
Okay.
The value over the term of each contract.
In 20, yeah, I have 2022 here. Obviously, AFSMI was 2.5, fire was 2.5, police was 2. In 2023, AFSMI is 3, fire is 3, police is 2 for the COLA.
So, I was, over the full term, was, is my understanding correct, that police got 6, fire got 5, and AFSMI got what over the full term?
There was two things, there's two things going on. There's the COLA inflation adjustment, and there were some market adjustments. So in fire, for example, in 2022, it was 2.5 COLA and a 1% market adjustment. So that'd be a 3.5 total. For police, it was a 2 COLA and a 0.5% market adjustment in 2023 for 2.5. Is that what you're getting at?
No, I was, I was just wanting to know, when we negotiated the contracts, you know, what was the value of the COLAs over the term of the contracts? Like, it's, what was, they were each three-year contracts?
Yes.
Okay.
The cumulative total?
The cumulative total of each contract.
Yeah, I don't have the cumulative total right in front of me here today, but I can have it available.
All right, thanks.
Other questions? Counselor Kylie?
Bill, at the bottom of the page that you have displayed right now, it says, "does not apply to mayor, city directors, chief of staff, or medical-appointed staff." Is it safe to say that it also does not include us, city council members, for clarity?
It does not include city council members.
Thank you. We don't want people thinking that we're voting on a raise for ourselves in this situation. So it does not include city council members. So technically, to kind of piggyback off of this last line of questioning, so you're really not opening the contract for the purpose of rebargaining at this point?
That is correct. We have not.
And the same as what it was a year-plus ago with the Juneteenth holiday. It's a matter of trying to deliver the incentives necessary to help attract and retain current employees.
That is correct. And like I said, we presented it to them in the same fashion as the Juneteenth, where we said, we are willing to amend the contract, if you are willing to amend the contract. It has to be mutually agreed. And we have engaged in those discussions and have their concurrence to move forward.
So when we talk about opening the contract, it's, again, just want to make it clear that we're not opening a contract to renegotiate the entire package.
We are not.
Thank you.
Counselor Neitz, sir?
So I guess as a follow-up, obviously, with inflation, all of our buying power is being eroded, all of us. But let's say that I could establish, and this is just picking one, and I have no idea whether this is a case or not, that if we looked at engineers, that their pay was competitive with the local market, maybe even it's better, let's just say, than the private sector. If you could establish that, why would you give somebody a $2,000 incentive?
My response to that would simply be, it's to recognize the gap in the inflationary adjustment that we have provided versus where it is today, that it's so disparate that we believe it's appropriate to move in that direction, to try to close that gap in some meaningful way, because it is so significant that we didn't want to ignore it.
Yeah, and so obviously, again, you have a difference between what my paradigm is, which is the private sector, where to the extent if I get some sort of a COLA, it's somewhere inside of any merit increase, you know? I mean, we don't have a COLA, per se. There's some years we don't get anything. It's just, that's just what it is. So what about that interplay? And I don't know whether that would happen, you know, like, could somebody potentially be getting COLAs over the years, and next thing, for whatever reason, that the rest of the economy, or whatever, that sector, whatever, pay lags behind in the private sector, and suddenly you've got employees that are making, you know, I mean, could you have a public sector employee making 20% more than what the comparable thing is in, you know, in the private sector, because of inflationary increases, and the private sector just wasn't keeping up?
Yeah, I've done three different comp and benefit studies over my career. Haven't generally seen that.
I wouldn't think so.
In terms of the data when we get it back. But that points to the significance of digging deeper, if you will, and expending some resources. And you'll see in the budget supplement as well, there is an extra $100,000 that's associated with the HR department to help cover those expenses, so we could start that process sooner. So you're looking at that data, and even in the last study, it utilizes private sector data, where you can make a private sector comparison as well. Because everybody's competing for accounts, for example. So we'll be able to get public sector comparison data, and we'll also be able to get private sector comparison data, and look and see how that reconciles. So we get that nice blend to help inform us as to where we are.
Okay. And so, just to be... And so ju- just to be transparent, as I've just been kind of thinking over the last few days, what I'm, what I'm trying to come, and I don't know exactly where I land on this, what I'm trying to come up with is, as I think about it, if I was just running a roofing company, if it was just me, it was my business, I, obviously, I can do whatever I want. I can give bonuses, retentions, whatever. I can do whatever large S I'd like to give to my employees, even if I'm not afraid I'm going to lose them, right, in, in good times. In the, in, in the, in a company like mine where we have a publicly traded, we are accountable to shareholders, so there's some accountability in terms of, you know, showing some sort of an ROI, you know, why are you doing this for your employees? But I'm just trying to think about, how do I think about it when you're talking about the public sector where, you know, this isn't my money that I'm giving out, it's taxpayer dollars? So what is the threshold of, of, you know, what, what the need should be? Like, you do, should we need to establish that there's actually a problem, that we're actually losing employees or we're going to lose employees? And if I can't establish that we're really losing employees or there's not an emergency here, i- is it appropriate to just be giving out? And this is, I mean, I love our employees, that's not the point, but, you know, giving out, you know, spending two and a half million dollars on, you know, essentially, I don't know what, how to call it, bonus pay or whatever you'd wish to call it, maybe people don't like that term, but, um, you know, if they weren't, if we felt pretty good that they're not going to leave in the first place, they're perfectly happy they're not going anywhere, why do it? Is it appropriate to do it with tax dollars? That's where I'm kind of?
And I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Counselor. And like I said, that, that, all the indicators are there for us that we're trying to say, let's not let the fire start before we do something. And, and those indicators, we think are present. Like I said, our employment team has been in place for a long time. We're seeing things we haven't seen in a, in a very long time. And we've enjoyed, like I said, a, a very, a good record for the past, I couldn't tell you, many, many years where generally all we have to do is, we throw an add up, and we've got, we've got more than enough applicants to come for, for our positions. It is, obviously, with, with the pandemic and what everybody else is doing in this marketplace, it is becoming increasingly challenging to do that. And we, like I said, we are just simply trying to stay ahead of it. I, I will not sit here and tell you that the sky is falling and that we can't, I'm not saying that, but I, I do believe this is very prudent and measured response and proposal to ensure we don't get there. But I, I understand and respect what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. It might be helpful if you had maybe a little bit of just the bullet points of, of those metrics that you rattled off, and I didn't get it all down about the number of positions posted and how many times you had to repost, you know, some data that kind of shows that things have changed. That would be helpful for me, I guess.
Counselor Kylie?
Yes, I, I was, I was just going to state the same thing. I, I believe earlier you, you talked about how the number of openings are increasing, and the time period to fill those is also increasing. In fact, you're going back two or more times to, to conduct interview, interviews in order to attract qualified individuals. I think if we had a little more of that, um, on paper for us to look at, that would, that would help. I think you established the need. And I do agree that we don't want to wait and, and until the dam is bursting.
Yeah, and if, and if I could to provide a little, maybe a little more clarity or substantive example to what I was talking about, I do have some of that data. So eight of the positions that we had to go back out to the marketplace, just, it won't take long to do, custodial worker, we had to go out two different times, licensed practical nurse, three times, planning and zoning specialist, twice, police records clerk, principal engineer, sewer collection technician, staffing engineer, and water operator, two different times to try to get somebody to, to fill those positions. So like I said, when you look at this and you step back and you look at the totality of what's going on, like I said, that's what kind of helped lead us to saying we wanted to be proactive.
And I was just going to also say that it's, it's not unique to the city. It's happening throughout, uh, throughout the, the community, you know, the private businesses as well as governmental, uh, throughout the state, throughout the country, and even, even our not-for-profit to attract employees. We're in a position now where we're basically paying the costs for lodging and room and board for people to attend the training. It used to be that we, uh, could, could actually charge a tuition for the training, but now it's, pickings are pretty slim, and it's harder and harder to attract those individuals. So you have to, we have found that we've had to rely on some incentives. And we have, it's, uh, what we've done this year has been very successful.
Counselor Breckie?
The one point I just want to make clear, though, is this is a lot different than just negotiating Juneteenth, correct? I mean, this is, this is unique for us. To my knowledge, we've never gone in, in the middle of a contract and negotiated a full benefits package that, that is so complete, it would have been maybe all we'd brought to table in a, in a previous session. We'd have used something this generous to, to seal the deal on a whole contract. So I understand the situation is, is different, so maybe different times deserve different things, but, um, again, the only other time I ever remember doing, I think it might have been Martin Luther King Day when we were switching it from Columbus Day to Martin Luther King Day, and just kind of like Juneteenth, we went in and said, hey, we'd like to do this in the middle of the session. But I do want to point out that this is a different, a completely, you know, different measure and that we are putting forth, you know, a, a broad-based, you know, retention, wellbeing, and recruitment package, you know, on the table. And in the fashion of, as you said, it's in a take it or leave it fashion, right? It's not, it's in a take it or leave it fashion. You're saying, we want to open it and do this, but we don't want to open the contract. You either take it or don't take it.
No, Counsel, you're, you're correct, and, and that's certainly not the norm, and that's not norm, normally something we would like to do. And as I said before, we're in very unconventional waters and, um, trying to respond and, and do what we think is a prudent and appropriate thing, um, there's a little unconventional process that goes, that goes with it. But I don't disagree with you that, that, that certainly is not the norm to amend the contract that substantively when you have one in place. I don't disagree with that at all.
Other questions? I have a few, please. On your retain part, on the bottom, you analyzed and adjusted our part-time seasonal employee wages, and I know we've been very proactive in that. Could you address where we're at? I believe, was it a two dollar an hour raise we gave for our seasonal employees? Or, or is that just lifeguard?
I, I think in some, it might have been as high as that. It, it was across the board. For some, it was, it may have been nothing. But depending on where we, we, we needed to make the change, we did. Some of it might have seemed as high as that, and then I'm going to lean back to our comp and benefit manager. Yeah. And the, and for people listening at home, a lot of those changes, those, those more sensitive changes happened in the parks department.
Okay. On the recruit side, you, you talked about commit to a starting minimum wage for full-time employees in the less than seventeen fifty per hour. What is that today?
The, the lowest?
The minimum?
Fifteen forty-seven.
And how many employees would we have at that level that would start?
We had twenty-five employees that we, we have, we have lifted.
Okay. If I could, I could ask Director Pritchard to come up and give us more fully, maybe a more in-depth statement on where the money is coming from.
So primarily, we're in the process of closing our year. As you're aware, we'll be back in April to give a full synopsis. The audit will be completed, and we'll be able to give you the end-of-year report for the city as well as the monthly financial report for April. We are still in the process of closing the books. Within the next couple of weeks, at least, we'll have our finalization on the actual number, numbers as we go into the, kind of finishing the process of the audit and the annual financial report preparation that goes into it. And there's a process there. However, what we do know is our sales taxes were up nineteen percent last year, nineteen point three percent to be exact, nine point seven million in sales taxes over budget for the year twenty twenty-one. So when you speak of what our unobligated balance is, um, part of that will speak to the increased sales taxes. Now, as we got further and further in the year, it became very evident that those sales taxes were probably going to come in over what we had expected for the budget, even more so than what we had kind of contemplated as we went into the twenty twenty-two budgeting process as well. So overall, as far as the general fund unobligated balance, uh, we provide some projections as we get into those last monthly reports of the year. We're very much in line with that. We should be slightly ahead of it, uh, and we are running probably around a thirty-six percent, I believe, unobligated balance with the general fund reserve as we were coming into that year. So, well, final numbers, but certainly the nine million more in sales taxes that we received in the last year is the primary basis for this.
Okay, if I could dovetail on Counselor Erickson a little bit, I think you identified that if a, if, it was identified at housing money for a housing employee. So does that go all the way across the board, police, comes out of police budget, police? So what, so what happens if the police spent all of their allocated money for two thousand and twenty-one, and some other department had leftover money that they had budgeted?
All of it goes back into the general fund because it's not obligated beyond the end of the year. So we always budget anticipating, we, we budget from reserve knowing that we probably, you know, it's, we're always going to turn back two to three percent of our budget because we can never exactly hit our budget for that year because it's, you'd be in trouble if you're getting to that ledge or availability. So some departments are at ninety-eight percent spent, some get to ninety-nine percent spent, some get to ninety-six percent spent. But we always expect, in general, we'll bring back two to three percent of the entire budget and carry it into, uh, unspent into the next year. That becomes part of the unobligated, uh, balance.
Okay, so what I'm taking from your statements is that allocating this, these dollars will not create a financial hardship for the city of Sioux Falls?
Correct. We're still in a very strong financial position. In fact, uh, there's been a lot of questions about the size of our kind of unobligated balance over time as well. We've worked to work down, we, we continue to try to manage that in the out years and make sure we stay at that, above that twenty-five percent level. But we have been blessed, kind of going back to Counselor Breckie's comments, of the uniqueness of this particular, uh, request that's coming forward. But to be very honest with you, we live in unique times. Nineteen percent sales tax increases when we typically were getting four on a regular basis over the last decades is unique for us. We received, you know, sixty million more in federal funding than we really had ever expected we would have received. Inflation's running at a forty-year high for what we're seeing right now. We've had a global pandemic. We have supply shortages, labor shortages, shutdowns. We are in unique times. And so I think in many ways, we are attempting to take a unique approach that is, um, sensitive to the time period that we're in as we address that. We've done some unique things here, even as a council, we were transferring money from the general fund into other funds. We've never really done that. We, we transferred it into the sales and use tax fund from the federal funds that we received. It's not something that we've typically done, but we've done in this case just because of the unique nature of the, the budgeting that we had. And, and hopefully, we settle in here over the next couple of years ahead. But we're, it's been an interesting year.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie?
Build off of what you'd stated, and again, and you had mentioned it when you were addressing Counselor Erickson's comments. So the funding, for instance, what's available from, from housing? Make sure I understand this correctly. These are employee funds that were unused and available then, unused in twenty twenty-one, and that would roll over back into the general fund?
We do roll back into the general fund. Housing carries forward its balance into the next year. Housing fund's a little bit different from, because it is its own fund within the city. With that, we do transfer, um, over, I think it was one point four million from the general fund into the housing fund, I think was what, last year? I think, uh, your budget analyst kind of brought that forward. So we did, we do transfer a significant amount of money, but it, as written here, this does come from the unobligated fund balance of the housing fund. If, if, if the, if it were to be amended, you could simply just amend it to transfer from the general fund to the housing fund thirteen thousand dollars.
Because what I'm getting at, it technically does not affect the twenty twenty-two budget for housing.
It does to a certain extent because you're, you're operating but off of a certain number of balance, what you have for a balance, or your expectations for balance in that account.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson has a question on the phone?
Thank you, just another follow-up. Just, I'm trying to process this all, so, um, please understand that my, my questions are just for me to process this and, and not that I'm being super critical, but just want to process where we're at. You know, the COLA was brought up earlier, and, you know, personally, I feel like we probably, we probably missed the mark on the COLA. The state did six percent, we did two and a half. We, we probably missed the mark on that, which it happens, I get it. You know, when we talk about the two thousand dollar bonus, that bonus disappears in twenty twenty-three, and then we're behind again. We, we actually didn't get ahead. And so I'm curious if we've, have we considered just increasing that COLA two and a half to three and a half percent, so a five to six total percent COLA increase, and making it effective January first, January first, and having those employees receive retro pay? Is that something we've considered? It, it seems, I, I know I'm probably oversimplifying it, but the other thing that I like about that a little bit is the fact that the supplemental appropriations that we're doing of money turned in at the end of the year, um, and I know you're in front of us and you're engaging with us, I get it. However, we like to have, I always call it an à la carte menu that comes forward, and we get to engage and say, these are the top priorities, and I'm sure this is a top priority or you wouldn't be in front of us, but we certainly haven't heard any other items coming forward at this point. And, and, and to your defense, nor have I brought anything forward either. But when we talk about spending that extra money at the end of the year, we, we like to, you know, kind of talk through that a little bit differently. And so it's really just pre-spending that with, without the à la carte menu, if you will. So truly, my main question is, the, the bonus disappears in twenty twenty-three, we're behind again, and have we considered just increasing the COLA two and a half to three and a half percent to get to that five to six percent, make it effective January first, and have the employees receive retro pay?
So a, a couple of responses to that, in terms of kind of, did the city miss the mark in terms of when it, we have to think about when these, when these negotiations began, they began very early in last year in terms of these agreements. And to that extent, inflation wasn't running what it currently is. Inflation started taking off, uh, a little bit later in the year, especially as we started getting into, uh, the latter parts of the year. So it continues to escalate over time. There had been some signs that the inflation was starting to go up, but it was very difficult to tell, especially when you had a Federal Reserve and the, uh, saying that this was all transactionary and that this was all going to kind of take care of itself, and it was just a short temporary blip on the radar screen. The, the thought of going with the one time is really to sit and assess what's going to happen as we get into budgeting for this year because, um, simply put, uh, we have to kind of take into consideration what our revenue outlook is going to look like here over the next several months. We had a very different year last year with, with elevated sales tax returns. We need to ensure that, uh, we're going to continue to see that growth continue, especially as we get to the months of April, May, and June, which is when we started seeing those elevations occur. But really, some of those conversations about what that future looks like and making sure that we're staying market competitive and whether the, the COLAs are, are accurate was something that we're looking to consider as part as we go into the budgeting process into this year as we're budgeting to, into twenty twenty-three. Certainly, the, the two thousand dollars doesn't maybe make up for the complete difference between inflation. It is, you know, somewhat of an, uh, a Band-Aid to try to, to bring back to where we, we should have been or could have been, uh, had we known exactly where we were going in an inflationary environment. But what it does do is, it allows us to address that without committing the city to a long-term expense yet until we kind of are able to contemplate and, and really be balanced in our approach. And secondly, um, the one thing about a, a kind of similar amount that's given across the board is it really reflects that the people at the, the, uh, the lower income side of the work at the city actually receive a higher proportion of benefit as a result of getting a flat fee across the system. And if you look at the, the, uh, the, in terms of retention or trying to attract individuals to work in the environments right now, it really has been. If you look hospitality sectors and some of those that, that are maybe not in those professional service areas, if you look at where inflation is hitting you the greatest, groceries, gas, rent, used cars, those things are driving inflation right now, and it's taking up a larger share of people's budgets, especially when you're getting into some of those lower levels. So the way this is structured is it does actually have a higher effective impact on those individuals.
Counselor Neitzler?
Sorry.
Thank you, that makes, that makes sense.
Go ahead.
Thank you, that makes sense, Sean, I appreciate that. Director, I appreciate the, the feedback on that. The only, the, the thing with the COLA is it does go ahead and addresses the salary differences that, that need to be adjusted anyways, and so it would get us there to that point. But, I mean, I always say there's always one way, more than one way to skin a cat, so I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Counselor Neitzler?
One question, one comment. Did labor contracts we negotiated through twenty twenty-three, was that right?
I believe that's the case, correct?
Okay. So, and I was kind of thinking along the lines of what Counselor Erickson was thinking was, you know, what if you, a little bit different, like, well, what if you just reopened it? And if we think we got, if the, well, I won't, I won't even say got the COLA wrong because we had what was on the ground at the time. It was, it was, it was negotiated, and that was quite a while ago at this point, and things have changed substantially. But I guess maybe, as I'm thinking about this, the, the point of the $2,000 is under the retain to retain employees. The things I'm hearing about reposting jobs and that sort of thing and finding, you know, getting employees, everybody's struggling with that. I have no doubt that that's not an issue, but that's recruiting new employees. So again, can you establish there's a retention problem and that there's actually a reason to give $2,000? Besides, you could make the argument that, I don't, again, I'm not, maybe it isn't that we got quote unquote the COLA wrong, but the COLA, but essentially inflation has now changed on us and this is a stopgap. But, but, I mean, you can make an argument, instead of doing this, why don't we just wait a little while and just renegotiate 2023?
You know, and I can give you a personal experience. We just hired one position in our department. We had three applicants. They were all internal. We had zero external applicants for that position. So it's a little surprising for us is, for a professional position that we would typically get many applicants for. And hopefully, that was just a one-time thing, but that, that gives you an example of, of some of the things that we're seeing out there in the marketplace right now.
But, but that could argue for potentially raising wages overall so people want to come. Because if I'm applying, what, what does it matter to me that you gave everybody, I would have to know, I guess, that you gave a $2,000 one-time incentive. I mean, that might demonstrate that maybe you're a good employer, but I don't know what that necessarily does versus saying, hey, we'll give you a $2,000 sign-on bonus to a new employee if, if recruiting is really the problem. Because if you had two applicants that were internal, obviously, they must like working for the city. So that may even prove that there is a retention problem.
The, the, the key thing I would say there, and I know Bill wants to speak here, is, we're really, there are many factors that come into play in how you retain employees, right? But we also, again, we're recognizing some of the inflationary pressures that we're seeing and trying to stay competitive while assessing what the future of that inflation rate looks like. And then we're looking at the, the comp and benefits study because that really identifies how are we doing from a market, market competitive standpoint? The last thing I would say is, our city is only going to be as good as the people that we hire to run it. And one of the blessings we've had as a city is that we've hired really good people. I can say that coming from the private sector, coming to the city, how impressed I was with the, with the amount and talent of the people that we have here. And that's one of the reasons why we're very successful as a community. And if we hope to continue to maintain that, we need to be able to continue to attract good people into public service for our city.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was really good. And I wanted to emphasize, again, on that, on that piece. And again, that's why we, we try to come with a very measured approach. It hits various disciplines, both retaining and recruiting and the wellbeing of our employees. And I, and I do think that knowing an independent, objective, data-driven process, like comp and benefits study, you know that that's coming forward. And you can see that the city is committed to doing those things to ensure it doesn't fall behind in the marketplace. And they know that, that we, we make adjustments. If we're, because I've always said that the last place you want to be is you don't want to be behind the market. I mean, you want to compete on, in fact, we're in the public sector, that we're in the game and we're competitive with our wages and benefits. But not everybody is there. And that's our commitment is that we do those things. And if we need to do those things more frequently, we will do that. The other piece is, we've also had the hiring incentive that's available as well. So if we are having a difficult sector and say we're having trouble, we'll use your example of, of an engineer. I mean, if we are really struggling, we, we now have the ability to say, hey, I might need to give a $2,000 hiring incentive to get you here in addition to moving expenses and things like that. So some of those tools are available to us as well as a piece of the strategy here.
Okay. And thank you. And again, I don't want this to be taken in the wrong spirit. Our, our city employees are second to none, and there's a reason why. So we want to stay being a good employer. But again, this is an extraordinary proposal, so I think it requires maybe some extraordinary thoughts and justification. So just working it through. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? I just would like to, one quick observation is, the paradigm has shifted. And it shifted in the last two years from what we've done for 40 years. I sat on the employee's side, now I sit up here and try and make these decisions. So it is a significant change that some of us are struggling with on how we go forward, whether it be labor negotiations, how the employees are treated. And it's not just us. It's everybody out there in the private industry right now. And I appreciate you guys forward-thinking on it. Not sure it's absolutely the perfect thing, but I appreciate the effort that you guys are putting forward to it. And I appreciate the public employees that we have, and I hope we can keep the best ones. With that, it's time for public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'd just like to point out, executive session was canceled after consultation with Stacy Coystra. So we stand adjourned.